Well, welcome everyone to the Public Safety Veterans Subcommittee meeting. We have a special meeting on our ethics policy. I'd like to see if there's any call to the public. And we actually have one card, and that's Ken Baker. If you come on up. And you have about two minutes or so.
Good afternoon. I hope this is on. I'm here today. My name is Ken Baker. In light of the heightened situation going on around our nation, I'm here to talk to the council. I know you guys can't respond, but I need to bring this to your attention of harassment that I have received from an officer by the last name of Sullivan. Now, there's two Sullivans in South Phoenix. I'm talking of the older gentleman. He was last seen, well, where I seen him at was in Tempe in a Phoenix patrol car, baseline and Priest, where I was riding back from Tempe on my bike. He was out there following me. I took the number off his car. I called the South Phoenix Precinct, and that's how I was able to find out his name and who he was. I contacted his sergeant. His sergeant had no idea that he was in Tempe for any reason. I know this gentleman was following me around. I'm concerned now in that the last, that I recall, the two gentlemen that have deceased now at the hands of police officers were African-American, over six feet tall. I'm concerned. I'm not afraid. Hear me clearly, but I am concerned. I want to know why he was following me around. What was his reasoning? And I don't want this to be pushed under the carpet, okay? The situation is serious in our nation right now, and I'm not afraid to speak out. I came to this meeting today to make my concerns known. I actually demand a response from someone, okay? Appreciate your all's time.
Mr. Baker, thank you for your testimony. And what I'll do is I got your letter from December 10th. This is the letter with the detail, right?
That is the letter.
Well, I'm going to pass on to our Assistant City Manager, Milton, and see if he can kind of figure things out. And it's in detail right there of everything he's talked about. And then Milton, if you can, maybe inform us on what the conclusion is, right? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to go to item number three, which is our ethics policy discussion that we had back in, early October, I think it was, right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Dan Brown and I are here today to give you an update on ethics and specifically to review what occurred in October and then to help support your discussions about additional subjects that we need to work through in the arena of ethics. So by way of review, and Mr. Chairman, I will take your cue if there is a place where you would like me to stop along the way. But previously, we discussed, and I think we had concurrence, that a gift was something of value given to someone in their capacity with the city. We also had concurrence from the Subcommittee that gifts should apply to elected official, board, and commission members and employees. An area where we did have some discussion, and it's Dan and I's desire to make sure we got the words correct, is that the gift's definition should also apply to those individuals who regularly work within the city manager, mayor, and city council offices, including volunteers, interns, and contractors. The intention of this is not someone who comes in one time to stuff envelopes or support other special activities of the council office, but who's regularly and customarily has a work position within your office. And so it's, we just wanted to affirm, was this indeed continuing to be what the Subcommittee's intentions were, okay? Gifts do not include political donations, as those are governed by state law, and do not receive, do not relate to items that are received unrelated to anybody's capacity with, as a city employee or a city representative. In the area of disclosures, again, I think everyone was consistent about 30 days of receipt of gifts, that records would be kept for two years after leaving the city, that there would be website or database posting. An area that we did believe we got feedback from you was to adjust that gifts whose value is not immediately known or is, you cannot determine, or gifts that are greater than the $50 threshold should be disclosed, including community events.
May I ask a question? Go ahead.
Councilmember Williams.
I talked to the city clerk about this, and he's creating a database, as I understand it. When we don't know the value, I mean, I have no problem disclosing it, putting it on a list, as long as that database will accept a U for unknown or something, because I don't want to put in a false amount. And I also don't have the knowledge nor the ability to seek out exactly what the ticket price could have been if you're a guest of somebody else, or if there was even one involved.
And Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Williams, we will ensure that there is an ability to represent unknown value for gifts. And it is the expectation, and I didn't mention this upfront, but ultimately, following this meeting with the Subcommittee's direction, our intention would be for Dan and I to work together to prepare an actual ordinance. And so contained within that ordinance would be the opportunity to have the language that would indeed reference the maybe more precise question that you're asking to be solved for, and we'll note that and address it accordingly.
Okay. Thank you.
I think if you could maybe define what applies to a gift and maybe, and what's banned it right now.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. So what is a, what is the definition of a gift?
Correct.
Well, you're sort of alluding to that that's quite a broad definition.
Oh, no, basically, what I like to do is have a little definition of what is a gift and who does it apply to, as elected officials, as city employees. I think we kind of raced through that.
And I'm happy to, again, so.
And I know that we have members that, we talked about volunteers within our own office, but also, I just want to be very clear with individuals that sit on our boards and commissions and all that. Just want to make sure that people are very clear that it's not just elected officials, but it's also employees, and maybe you could fill in the blanks.
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, clearly, a gift is anything of, anything of value received by someone within the city in their capacity representing the city organization. And I don't, and I, I'll let the city attorney describe why the definition is described in that manner, because I think there is some precedent for this found elsewhere in law.
Mr. Chair, yes, the gift that was previously discussed and that we're recommending that the Subcommittee and council consider is taken from state statutes, and specifically, it's found in 411231. And it basically means a payment, distribution, expenditure, advance, deposit, or donation of money, any intangible personal property, or any kind of tangible personal or real property. And then the state statute, similar to what we're recommending, goes into a number of exclusions that we reviewed last time, and we can certainly go through that as well. But that definition is actually found in state law, and so what we are recommending and proposing essentially is a very similar, not exactly the same, but very similar definition.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Again, who we think it applies to is elected officials, all board and commission members, and employees. We also, based on the feedback that we heard from the Subcommittee, heard feedback that volunteers and interns and contractors or vendors who support the city manager, the mayor, or the city council, and are regularly come to work in those offices would also be bound by the same ethics, the same gift definitions and obligations of the ethics policy.
And is that the review for the last October meeting that we asked you to come back, or is there?
No, there are a few additional items.
If you go ahead and then at the very end, I guess we'll ask you questions if there's any questions from my colleagues.
And I do have questions on Slide eight. I don't know. We've sort of covered it, and we're back, so.
Gifts do not include, as we said before, political donations, and if you receive something that is not related to your capacity as a city official. And the gifts that are banned completely, and this, I believe, is also something that Dan can speak to in some detail, but are those that give the appearance of undue influence or a conflict of interest. Dan, did you want to?
Mr. Chair and members of the Subcommittee, this is consistent, again, with the Task Force recommendation from 2013 as well as state law. So again, this is consistent, and so I just want to be sure that the purpose or the intent of this, it doesn't matter what price, if it creates undue, the appearance of undue influence or conflict, it's banned. It doesn't matter the value.
So is that state law?
To answer your question, generally, yes. It's not explicit like that. We tried to just simplify it and make sure that, but state law goes through a number. Depends, like, for example, in Title 38, they have a number of definitions. This particular definition is consistent with another provision in state law that's related to entertainment, and it defines the types of gifts and excludes them. So to answer your question, yes, it is, but you're not going to find, unfortunately, a succinct definition like we're proposing. And we thought it's, in the interest of clarity, we would just make it very plain right out front that this is, this is what's banned.
We did want to, and this was more of an acknowledgement, that there is a ban in state law on gifts of entertainment for elected officials.
So I think, like, number two, if that's, we're taking it from state law or whatever statute, I think it needs to be statute, dah 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 dah.
Okay.
However, you know, whatever we're using for, say, number two, that it just, so that if somebody wants to go and read it, they know where to go and read it.
Okay.
Yeah. To me, that's very clear, and they can.
Find it there.
Yes.
No, that's an excellent suggestion.
In terms of disclosure of the gift, again, within 30 days of the event occurring, and as Councilwoman Williams mentioned, the city clerk is working on a format to simplify this so that it can be done online. The records will be kept for two years after leaving the city, which conforms with state law. And then the issue, again, that we believe we heard last, was that gifts of an unknown value or greater than $50 would be disclosed, including those for community events.
Yes, Councilwoman.
So let's say the Anti-Defamation League was giving an award to a member of our police force who'd done some great work fighting hate crimes, and they provided a table to the coworker of the individual winning awards. Could you take me through the process of what each individual police officer would do, and sort of talk about what level of staffing you think this would require if we were to do it on a citywide level? How expensive that would be?
Maybe I'll break that into two parts.
That would be excellent. I am sorry, it was a dreadful question.
No, no, no. That's okay. One is more of the application of rule or law, and the other would relate to kind of how do you put it into practice? And maybe I ask Dan to kind of at least conceptually walk through, just, but I want to make sure we get the facts set right. Somebody receives an award, as a part of their award or recognition, a table is provided in some fashion.
Police, to 10 police officers.
10 police officers.
And the ticket costs more than $50.
In that situation, what, as we understand the current policy is proposed, each of those 10 police officers would have to disclose the receipt of that, because someone else, we're assuming that a third party, someone else provided the ticket. That's what I understand. And so in, under, as proposed, what would happen in that situation is the 10 police officers would disclose the fact that they received that, the benefit of the ticket, whatever the value of it is. But essentially, that's what it would be, and that would be maintained for two years on the database.
And then, Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Gallego, on how is this administered? The goal is that we would have on the website either a fillable PDF form, or ultimately, as Councilwoman Williams mentioned, a database where anybody who is in receipt of a gift that falls within the standards requiring disclosure would fill out the form online, and the city clerk would be involved in just the keeping of that, much as they do other records of the city. Go ahead.
Okay. You were about to ask.
All I was going to say is ultimately, the volume of this is, could be a lot of disclosure, no doubt. And the amount of administration of this is not yet today clear, but I don't imagine it would, at least as to the keeping of records, is going to, it would require some effort and investment of energy and staff time of the city clerk. Certainly more than nothing, and I could envision, depending upon how extensive we have reporting, you could get a half or more of someone's time keeping the database going in live. But I will admit, we have not had extensive conversations with Chris Meyer into the detail of how do you think you would staff this, because we're waiting a little bit to know what it is that we're ultimately going to try and present as a draft ordinance.
And then, do you think management in different departments would probably have to set up structures to administer this? So, you know, the community action officers probably go to community events all the time, and they would have to have management structures in the departments to make sure we're being accountable?
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Gallego, yes, I think is absolutely, there's going to be some amount of management control. But I would also say there are many city practices that have similar sorts of structures that relate to cities' conduct of their duties. How this adds, I think, just really, I don't, I think we don't know right now with precision to tell you what we think that would, that might involve little additional effort beyond what is already applied. It might involve more to the extent that departments have leadership needs for understanding more and more precision what their employees are involved in. I can tell you, there probably will be some departments who will have stronger expectation of their employees by virtue of what their employees do. So for someone who conducts inspections of some kind or another, receiving, I think the city manager's intention, and it has been previously brought up, that gifts, that departments could have lower or less gift opportunities for employees who are in a position of regulating, and that it might create an unnecessary conflict for the employees. So I think, again, that is yet to be put together and promulgated, but that is, I think, a possible outcome.
Councilman Pastor.
On number four, it says gifts of unknown value or greater than $50 threshold should be disclosed, including community events. Well, if I'm attending a community event or a community dinner, it automatically falls into the gifts of unknown value and greater than 50. So do we need that last tagline? Because it would fall under there automatically. I mean, I guess illegal.
We could, we could create, Mr. Chair, Councilman Pastor, we could create it in any form that you would like. We referenced the community events because that was the language that you provided us the last time, but we're quite happy providing just simply the statement, and that certainly is more than enough clarity for what would go into the ordinance. So if we eliminate it, as you suggested, eliminate community events, there's enough information there to inform what is needed in that area.
Okay. And then, I'm just, I'm visualizing this. So maybe, should be disclosed, i.e., maybe for those that don't, you know, community events, this ticket is more than, this dinner is more than $50, or unaware, unknown, but I guess it would be an unknown value, so you would still disclose.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Pastor, that's correct. I mean, and I think this goes to what Councilmember Williams was stating. I mean, you would just have to place the U in the, that it's unknown, and would you disclose it? Because many events, as you well know, you don't know what the price of, or the value, the fair market value of that is. So I think that that's how we've tried to address it. You just simply state unknown, but it's disclosed for purposes of any ethics allegation or violation. I think you've satisfied your duty once you've disclosed it.
Okay. So then, we don't necess, I don't know, I guess all of us could talk about it, but I don't think we need that there, because we know. I don't know.
Any other inputs about that?
I feel like the Director of Economic Development probably goes to, I mean, maybe 30 events a week?
I don't know. Do you?
Subcommittee members, I think it is fair to say there are staff in certain functions and in leadership positions who are in the community, much as you are, many nights a week, most weeks of a month. And so it is very fair to say that there will be a number of events where this might indeed be the case. There also might be many events that do not. It's just, it's imprecise to know until you kind of encounter the event. But it is, there certainly is events, a couple of events a night every single week in this town that are good, appropriate things for the city to be involved in, to be certain, that would fall into the purview of number four.
Paul, a question I have is kind of on the same lines as Councilmember Gallegos' is, how much time would this take for our staff? I mean, from, I'm just thinking about myself. We would have to have my staff actually fill out some forms and information, then we'd have to pass it on to someone else, and then that person would have to pass it on. I mean, I think it's a lot of time, and I'm just thinking, NSD, police, yourself, I mean, all, I mean, we've got 14,000 employees, and out of these 14,000 employees, every day, there's something going on. And I think, I understand what the purpose is, to be as transparent as possible, but I know that most of our calendars are public record, and it's open to the public. Would that kind of fulfill that community event aspect of it? And maybe, once we accept a gift, or if there's something that's over $50, I understand that aspect of it, but then, community events, it's so broad.
So let me be, Mr. Chair, let me be specific. If you ignore the words "community events," it'll still be, as Councilman Pastor mentioned, it will still be captured here. The intention is not to have every community event where someone gives you a glass of water, and that equal, well, you need to disclose that event. I think the goal is, you know, there are, if you go to the Anti-Defamation League and you just are asked to sit at a table, and it's very clear, because it's a fundraising event, that these tickets cost more than, the intention is, if it's greater than $50 or the appearance of it being greater than $50, but the value is unknown, it discloses. Everything else is not, the reason for having a $50 threshold is to not have to deal with, just exactly as you described, for every block watch event. If you don't know how much that bottle of water costs, the intention is not, and Dan can, and I can work on the drafting of something to help get to your concern, the intention is not to cover every event where there's not someone who put out a little slip of paper that said, well, the water bottles are $1.29. I'm being a little silly when I say that, and so I apologize. But the goal is, where it's obviously greater than the $50, but there's no clear path to understanding that, that was the intention, we thought, of trying to feed back on the concern that we can't always know what the cost is. But the $50 threshold is to deal with all of these community events that we attend that, really, so that we don't get into the point of disclosing a meeting where you have a donut, or a cup of coffee, or a glass of water, and that somehow that has incurred a gift. Any other question?
So what we're getting at here are the community events that we attend, like, I can only think of one right now, of Dancing of the Stars for the Kidney Foundation and being part of that. And so that would be, I get invited by Company A, and so that's where I would just disclose. Got it?
Yes, that is exactly correct.
So what happens if you're actually volunteering your time for a nonprofit dancing inn? And you happen to be elected official, do you have to report that?
I'm assuming.
I'm just giving Laura a hard time.
Okay. I think we understand the interest of the Subcommittee in not precisely calling out community events. I understand, and we will, I think, have a very clear sense of, we're trying to deal with values that are in excess of $50 but not precisely understood. I think, I think, Dan, I understand the spirit of what you're trying to get to.
So I feel like we want employees out in the community as much as possible, and putting in additional paperwork is not going to encourage that and may even discourage that. If, I think, the more the police officers are talking to the Anti-Defamation League, the better. If the police chief wants to go to the Asian-American, the Jewish-American, the African-American chamber, what, you know, these events, I feel like it's better, especially with some of the things that are going on, the more people are out, the better. So actually, we'd like to make a motion that we have an exception for reporting community events, similar to the one we have done for travel for economic development, because it is the job of the city and important part of our work.
So, before, I have a question towards that, because it says the definition of gift should also apply to individuals who regularly work within the city manager, mayor, and city council offices.
That are those following?
Including volunteers, interned contractors, vendors.
Right.
So this is applying to all employees?
Well, as it's stated in the previous slide, all employees of the city would be subject to it. This is trying to be additive to others who don't naturally fit the definition of employees but work very close to the policymakers.
The example that you just gave is a CEO going to a block watch party. Well, block watch is actually a group sponsored by the city and recognized by the police department. Why would that qualify as something you'd have to report?
I wasn't, I apologize. I was not suggesting that a city function is one that we would have to report. It was, as Councilwoman Pastor, it was the one thing that immediately came to my mind. So my intention was not to capture block watch activity, since that is a city-sponsored activity, much like if we have the Planning Commission or other public events of the city council, for that matter.
I'm not sure I want to exclude any employees. I, I think in a way that could become a real problem for the city management team. When you start excluding one, and a different department head has to report, I can see it becoming problematic in the future. I think there are too many people, especially in the beginning, are going to be watching to see people report, and it could be hazardous.
Well, the other concern I have about gifts with vendors and contractors, we're probably not the only vendor or the only person they're contracting with, so I think it's kind of odd that we're going to actually have them define gifts to us if they have other clients out there, right? And which, and when are they on city time or actually advocating for the city of Phoenix, and when they're actually working for another agency or another nonprofit or another city? It's kind of confusing there.
Okay. Okay, again, the, this is as much a response to the feedback we received from you last time. The intention that we're trying to get to is that there are, there are individuals who are close to the policymakers who are involved in the work, and delivering the work. And, and they, I think the intention was, they function as employees, and so being held to the same standard as employees, I think was the expect, or the intention, much like that there is a reference, and we haven't gotten to it yet, about exclusions for gifts for someone who has outside employment. That I think, to your, to your point, Councilmember, where someone might be also working in another place and receive gifts there, that would, that are unrelated to their involvement at the City of Phoenix, that would be an exclusion from a gift disclosure.
What I'd like to do is, I think there's a couple more pages, and then maybe after those other pages we go over, we can actually start making motions for certain parts of the recommendations.
Yeah, I was just going to say there wasn't a second to the motion, I, just as a point of clarification, so.
I have a question about the contract.
Okay.
So I think I need guidance, and I think it's Penny who can help us on the guidance of the contractors. So Penny, my question to you is, currently, I have employees in my office that are contractors.
They're temporary agencies, yes.
So I think this is what the contractors, and I don't, are they contractors vendors, or how does it?
I wouldn't turn that to be a contractor.
Okay. And the vendor is, who?
If, well, I guess you could also say, the temp agency is the vendor who, for a price, is delivering us staffing support in some quantity. There are also situations where you just contract with somebody directly as a, you know, as a company, not as an individual, and have a business relationship in that way. It was, we can be, we can certainly provide more broad.
I think this is getting at to those that are working within our office. For example, I have a contractor, a third-party through a staffing agency. So I think this is what it's getting to.
Yes.
Those that work in our office, that are closely to us, writing policy, engaged in our everyday office world life. I think this is what the intent was, or for whom.
So I think we need just some clarification, because, I mean, we have vendors that provide copy machines to us. We have vendors that are out there doing the Broadway road for us. I think that if they're actually employed by, would they, would they be included in that, or?
No, I, I think.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was going to say, by definition of, the definition of gift, as part of that definition, it refers to, in their capacity, in their position, as an employee, as a volunteer. So in other words, it wouldn't just be any vendor, or it wouldn't be any sort of contractor. By definition, it would solely be limited to, in their function, and a nexus with the City of Phoenix.
And I think additionally, Mr. Chair, back on Slide 5, our reference is really, if you're working in the offices of the City Manager, the 12th floor, or the Mayor and Council on the 11th floor, and you fit the role of volunteer, intern, contractor, or vendor, then that is the group, the group of individuals we intend to try and reference.
I have a question.
Councilwoman?
Planning and Development, we have inspectors now that could be on contract. They don't work within those offices, how does that apply to them?
It's a great question.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Williams, originally, we had included, our recommendation was to include those, that very situation, because, again, you could have a home builder, for example, there, there's all sorts of opportunity there for ethical conduct or misconduct. And so originally, we had included that as, because those are contractors.
And we didn't buy, we've tried to zoom up a little bit, you know, to get to the largest guardrails that surround the issues. We easily, for, in terms of the definition of employees, can also get to vendors who, or contractors who function in the role of employee, even if it's only on a contracted basis.
I think that's very important to be covered.
If we can maybe continue with the presentation and finish the two pages, then we'll go ahead and have discussion, and then approval of those items.
Exceptions for disclosure, gifts from a relative or partner. I think we discussed plaques and trophies that you receive, as anybody receives that in the vein of their work with the city organization. If someone is, I think, Councilman Noakowski raised, what happens if you work in another place? This is intended to say, if you work at another employer, and there's a gift you receive as a result of your employment in this other business, that is not subject to the disclosure requirements. Again, bolded, because we came to a conclusion that had a path A or a path B, is why it's represented here. Gifts under $50, if you recall, there was 25 or 50, we heard you give us direction about 50. We also heard direction that there was an exception for disclosure to City Council and employee travel for city business. And then last, gifts that are associated with a relative or partner, and I apologize for the missing words, who is in elective office, you know, is also what we heard as an exception to disclosure.
So with that, I'd like to open it for a discussion, and I like to break it down into three areas. If we can talk first about the definition of a gift, and if we can approve that. I'm not sure if there's any questions on the whole definition of what a gift is, and if you can go back to that page.
Page three.
But we would use the definition in statute, not the definition that appears here, because, like, legal advice is something of value. And so it seems like, if I met with a zoning attorney, and they said this is illegal, and they were, I don't know, I received, that would be legal advice, or?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Gallego, yeah, we can, we intend to expand it so that it's consistent with state law definition, so that we're consistent. So it would be in comport with, and if, for purposes of the subcommittee's action today, we can reference ARS Section 41-1231-9, is the definition of gift. And then, consistent with the recommendation, we can also reference that as well.
Any discussion, everybody in agreement? Then maybe we can have a motion to agree the, on the definition of the gift.
Move approval.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we agreed to the definition of gifts. Now, we're moving along, huh? Okay, who the gift applies to? I think that we need to define that, and then the third would be, what gifts are banned, and then that would be the final. So we'll talk about who the gifts apply to.
Number four, page four?
Right.
Mr. Chair, is this the one we just discussed, that you would add contractor employees?
So, and, thank you, and this one, we would add a D here, individuals who are contractors who function as employees or in the role of employees.
Okay. Any questions on?
So I'd like to do.
And then I think also on, on Slide 5, also references who it applies to, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So on Slide 4 and 5, and then adding that sentence that Paul just put in, is there any other discussions?
I'd like to make a motion to move the definition of gift.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, it passes. Okay, and then the final discussion would be on what gifts are banned. Loris. Delve a second, Mitch.
Yeah, I second that.
So on, on page seven, is a reference to a gift, the gift ban.
Right.
And I think Dan's approach would be to reference state law in these areas.
Right, and, Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, the actual entertainment prohibition is actually 41-1232.08. So that's the actual state statute reference.
Just some clarification on that last motion, it was gifts applied to, right?
Yes, who gifts are applied to?
Could you ask your question, that the motion that just passed is what you?
Basically, it's who the gifts apply to. And now we're talking about gifts are banned, what gifts are banned? And we're talking about the Page 7 and 8, right?
And actually, Mr. Chair, 8 and 9, and 10 really relate to disclosures.
Okay.
And so I might make a suggestion that if, if, you know, we'll take every bit of direction we can get. We're happy that you would want to have, give us direction on Page 7. It might be helpful that on Pages 8, 9, and 10, you also give us direction if these are consistent with what you want to do.
All right.
Mr. Chair, on Page 8, records kept for two years after leaving the city. So if the police officer in his first year has to report, and he leaves 30 years later, you have to keep that for 30 years? Is that a state statute?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Williams, yes, that's, the state statute is part of the record retention. So that's, that is consistent with the state law.
You're going to have to have a big data system.
The state statute applies only to elected officials.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Gallego, actually, for the types of records, this is different than the disclosure statement that elected officials must file under Title 38 of the state law. These, this is, the records required transactional business records. And so the City Clerk and I had, went back and reviewed what the statutory requirements were for other types of documents, and in this case, it's the two-year statute. So it's unrelated to the disclosure.
So, Dan, perhaps we can clarify, I think, for both, both the councilmembers. Do we need to keep the records for two years, period? Or do we need to keep the records for two years after an individual who has filed those records has left the city?
So what we had, you have to keep the, when this got condensed, there was actually originally two separate requirements. There was the requirement for two years, or in the event that, for example, it's an elected official, then at two years after the last term of the elected official. So there was two separate requirements, one for employees, one for elected officials, because employees can be here longer. But what the state retention schedule requires is a minimum of two years.
And so, Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, some of the direction we also have received almost all along this whole entire process has been that as much as, as all of those who are subject to the ethics rules broadly are all subject to them in the same way, is why this is, this is pictured this way. We could clearly keep the records for two years for everyone, and for two years following a term for the elected officials. And that clearly would simplify the amount of record-keeping that we conduct, and we, but we would defer to your judgment. Either way, I believe, from Dan's perspective, legally will work.
So, for clarity, then there would be an area, elected official, records kept for two years after leaving city? And then another area for employees, records kept for two years, am I hearing that?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Pastore, correct.
Okay, I think that's probably.
I think that's better.
Better. Do you need a motion on that?
Is there any other questions, or we'll accept a motion at this time?
And I just want to be clear of what we're moving. Are we Pages 7, 8, and 9 and 10, or just portions of those?
I think we're looking at 7 and 8, and then we'll go to 9 and 10.
Perfect.
And for clarification, on Page 8, we excluded including community events, is that correct?
We are just simply saying, we, the intention of what is written here is that it's gifts greater than $50, or the gifts that have the appearance of being greater than $50, but the value is not known, should be disclosed, and would be disclosed as unknown value.
Okay. I would move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Now, we're looking at the whole process and disclosure on Page 9 and 10.
So again, Mr. Chairman, these. These would be the two pages.
So basically, what we're looking at is anything under $50, doesn't have to be disclosed. If we're traveling on behalf of the city, representing the city, that doesn't have to be disclosed. And if you happen to have a relative or a partner that's an elected official, and you're going on, on an official business with that person, that that doesn't have to be disclosed.
That's correct, and then any gifts from a partner, plaques or trophies. And if you have employment that is outside of the city, and you relieve, and you receive a gift, those would also not have to be disclosed. So those would be the six broad elements.
Any discussion on that?
On number three, when it says gift related to outside employment, so if I get invited by my employment to go to a AWI luncheon, then I don't have to disclose, right?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Pastore, that is correct.
I just want to make sure that gift, okay, because I don't know necessarily if it's a gift, or it's part of my role as a director. So, I guess, yeah. Got it. Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All ready, all those, is any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes.
I have a question, and I don't know, Councilwoman Gallego made a motion for a piece somewhere, and I'm not sure if she was heard, or if we understood her motion, so.
I think we never got a second on that, so that's what we were waiting for.
Okay.
If we'd like to bring that back, or? If you'd like to, if you'd like to make a motion on that?
I move that we introduce an exception for community events.
Second.
All ready, so we're going back to Page number eight.
I thought we took that out.
What?
Did we take it off?
I think in the motion.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams, you thought we did what?
I thought we took it out of the language.
Took the community exemption. So you think we are requiring disclosure of every community event?
No, we took, it said including community events, and we deleted that.
I think, Paul, could you, Paul added that sentence in there, so. Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, so I apologize if this is my fault. My goal was referencing is everything over $50, or if it's obviously over $50, but we don't know the value, we would disclose the, whether it is an event or a mug, I don't know, that you've received from somebody, rather than referencing specifically in what vein or avenue it was received, whether it was an event, whether it was an item of value. whether it was an event, whether it was an item of value, whether it was, you know, flowers. So I apologize if I was unclear.
And, Mr. Chair, Councilmember Gallego, my understanding is you're proposing to an absolute.
An exception.
Exception where there would be no disclosure for community events. That's the distinction. So, as I understand it, is that correct? That's.
Right.
Okay.
Definition of community event.
Any questions?
Would we need a definition of a community event?
I, yes, I think we would. We have, we could do this two ways. But most likely, because it will require some precision, when we would come back with an ordinance for you to review, would have language, you will have an opportunity for discussion about that ordinance and about that specific language. I apologize, I don't have it with me right now of what was previously, that was before the city council, has had some language that referred to this exact situation.
So just clarification, so anything that we receive over fifty dollars, we'll have to report on it, right?
With the exceptions listed on page nine and ten. And so if, as I hear, the motion that has been put forward, that would be added as a new number seven on page ten would be an exception for community events. Definition to be determined.
So the motion, how I understand it right now, the motion is to exempt, it's one of the exemptions, so city council and employ, community events would be exempt.
From disclosure.
From disclosure. That's what the motion is.
Right.
So.
So to use an example that we previously, I'm sure the Anti-Defamation League will come back later and ask that we, using them as the example. But if they, if you go to an event like that and have a seat at that type of an event, under this motion broadly, what Dan and I would tell you based on having been through this a few times, that would not be something that would require disclosure.
Correct.
If the proposed motion on the table is adopted.
I believe we need to have a better definition because a community event can be almost anything, right?
Yeah.
We'd be happy to bring that back to the subcommittee. I just don't think we're prepared today. We can do that when we have your next meeting.
So with that, we have, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions on the motion? All right, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
So was that three, one, or two, two?
I think it's, I think it's three to one and we need to bring it, bring it back with the definition, right?
Okay.
Before we.
And obviously, we would comply with state law, so entertainment events are clearly inappropriate.
Mr. Chair, and members.
With that vote, that means then there's no disclosure of chicken dinners. How I'm understanding this motion.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Pastor, that is broadly correct.
Okay, so then there would be no need for a database.
No, we're doing a ton more gifts. Someone gives you fifty-five dollars of oranges.
You get taken to a lunch that caught, or a dinner that is not a community event.
Okay.
I think is the.
So then the dinners still are included?
If you and someone go to a dinner at a restaurant and your meal costs more than fifty dollars, that's not. Again, it depends on the definition of a community event. A community event, at least as we have broadly described it, and this is where the Anti-Defamation League is probably a good sort of example, where it's a broad event attended by a large quantity of people. It's not intended for, at least, that's open broadly to the public. Or even if it's not, but it's, of all of the rubber chickens as you described, where you get attendance that in the dozens and the hundreds is what is the intention of community event.
So is it an exception?
Yes, based on what you just adopted.
So it is, what we just voted on, it's an exception.
To that, to disclosure, that is correct.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
However, but if you met, if you went to a dinner with just the president of the Anti-Defamation League, just two of you, and it was over fifty dollars, then you would need to disclose that.
Correct.
So that's the difference.
No, I just want to be clear on what we just voted on in the sense of it's now an exception.
So if the economic development director went to the Bioscience Industry Association and the Arizona Association for Economic Development and six other things, that person would not have to file a report.
Correct.
And we wouldn't have to file a report.
Correct.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
So as a council person, what we discussed earlier, that we accepted earlier on, now we just reversed and now put it in an exception.
That is, that is correct.
I just want to be clear for the audience and everybody in the community what just happened.
Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee.
And I think that's where we're asking for a definition. So we want to figure out that if it's a dinner for corporate America and it's not a nonprofit, it's not a community event, what's the definition of a community event? Is it the Hispanic Chamber, the Black Chamber, the Phoenix Chamber? Would that be a dinner for them, a fundraiser? Is that a community event or not a community? I think we need to iron that out.
We will be happy to bring back options for your consideration. Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, the next area in three, in three parts we're bringing to you is to discuss the formation of an ethics commission. A discussion of the role of the commission. Discussion of the complaint process. And then how we move through into a, the city council's response to that. And so I'll take these in order. And, Mr. Chair, would you like me to go all the way through and then come back as before?
Absolutely.
Okay. As in, as has been discussed before, that originated with the task force on ethics. A commission was proposed that would be made up of five members. They would have three-year terms. To be eligible to be a member, it was originally conceived to be a judge. And that the recommendations to the city council would come out of the Judicial Selection Advisory Board. In terms of the role of the commission, they would receive complaints about elected officials and board and commission members. And I want to just be specific here, because employees work for the city manager, employee complaints would not come through an ethics commission. The commission would investigate complaints, appoint investigators or hearing officers if needed, and make recommendations by majority vote to the city council regarding complaints. I apologize, I've had one other thing that the commission that is proposed to do that we have heard from elected officials, and that is that it would make advisory opinions about whether an activity is appropriate under the city's ethics policies. And so a question could be asked, is attending activity X or going to event Y conform to the city's ethic policies? And that request could be asked of the ethics commission and they would produce a response that would provide direction for, for the elected official or board and commission member. In the complaint process, essentially, the ethics commission would receive a complaint. They'd determine if the complaint is worthy to investigate or to outright dismiss. If the complaint is pursued, the commission would appoint investigators as needed to determine facts or refer the matter to a proper venue. So if the issue that has been raised is not in the purview of the ethics policy but rather is in some other branch of government who is responsible for responding to those questions, it would simply be referred to them. And then by simple majority, the ethics commission, at least as originally conceived, would vote to refer items to the city council regarding complaints that they have investigated, including dismissal, a consent decree, or a proposed sanction. The city council, in response to an ethics commission recommendation in any of those fashions, would review the recommendation. And it could dismiss or approve a consent decree by simple majority. And to do anything else in terms of carrying forward the imposition of a penalty would require the vote of seven city council members. So a supermajority is required, as originally conceived by the ethics commission, or by the ethics task force. There were three notions of penalty. One is censure. The other was reimbursement of city investigation costs. These were suggested in past conversations with the city council to be capped at ten thousand dollars in terms of, as a penalty. And then last is removal from office. Board and commission members currently can be removed by the city council by a simple majority vote of the city council. And we don't suggest necessarily a need to change that now. For removal of office from elected officials, which would essentially is a referral to the voters for an up or down vote about removing an individual from office, requires a charter amendment. And would be something that the city council would need to advance onto a ballot. And so, Mr. Chair, that concludes the discussion of the ethics commission and penalties.
What I'd like to do is have a discussion on the commission membership. And if we can have a discussion and approve the commission membership at this time.
But I. I don't support this commission in any way. I've been at the city involved either on boards, commissions, planning committees, council for over twenty-five years. And all that time, I've only heard of one person who served on a planning committee who solicited some money to consider a case. There are state statutes, I am pretty sure, aren't there, Dan, that cover that if a board, commission member, or council, so if it's a bribe or a contribution, it's a felony. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Williams, under state law, it's in, actually, it's in Title thirty-eight. If a, an elected official is convicted of a felony, their position is considered vacant. And so under the city charter, the council would appoint or fill the vacancy. The issue comes up, for example, we were discussing earlier, the state statutes related to the entertainment prohibition or the prohibition of receiving gifts under state statutes. If, for example, if you don't disclose a gift in the amount of five hundred dollars, you don't file the state disclosure, those happen to be class-one misdemeanors. So if, if there's no current process to address misdemeanors. So you can have someone who's violating, a council member currently who's violating the law, that's a misdemeanor, and it would not be deemed to be vacant under the current state statute. So that's.
But they could be charged and found guilty of a misdemeanor.
They certainly could. So you could, and at that point, you would have to wait until either the voters began a recall process or an election. There's no current process to address if a council member violates the law and it's a misdemeanor.
I'm just saying, it hasn't happened. And to me, this is a very draconian measure. It's like taking a hammer to an ant. And I think that putting judges in that positions and saying they're non-political, how do they become a judge? They're appointed by a political body or person. I cannot support this.
The other thing, Mr. Chair, Councilmember Williams, actually, there is, the state legislature itself, as we, when the task force began its review, we looked at a number of governments at every level, at local, state, county, and federal level. And, for example, the state legislature itself, under Title thirty-eight, five nineteen, it actually appoints an ethics committee that's responsible for all the items that we've listed up here, appointing a special prosecutor if needed and to make a decision. They actually prepare the rules that are adopted by the state legislature at the beginning of the legislative session. And so generally, every level of government, the legislative body itself self-regulates. And it has to do with, you know, the balance of powers among the three branches. And so when the task force made the original proposal, there's no current process for this legislative body to self-regulate. And so that's, that's the genesis of the recommendation for the commission.
Is it possible that if a violation, pardon me, violation was reported, the city manager could hire an independent investigator who could review it? It would then, results depending on what criminal charges should be made, and results come back to a spatial council meeting and be resolved there?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Williams, yes, I mean, it would be possible for, yes, the city manager could work with the city attorney to appoint a special prosecutor, if you will, to look into it. Certain laws, for example, the state statutes regarding the entertainment violation and the failure to disclose the gifts, those, that, the purview of that enforcement is already delegated to the county attorney or the attorney general. So the city manager in those situations would not be able to.
But it would be referred elsewhere, correct? I mean, it's not like it's dropped and forgiven.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Williams, that's, that's correct.
Because if you're talking once every twenty-five years, at a minimum, I mean, we haven't had anything in that long. I just think this is too extreme and it's not necessary. I think it will be a detriment to getting people to serve on boards and commissions, to even run for council, when you look at the penalties involved. Unless you are very wealthy or have a law degree, I don't know how you could afford to take that risk. Because I think this will invite people with political ambitions or people who are not real happy with a decision that's been made to launch ethics violations. And I would hate to see that happen. And then you have to defend yourself. And the publicity that you will get, you know what the headline will be? Accused eighteen ethics violations. Nowhere will it appear. All eighteen dismissed, invalid. I just think it's the wrong way to attack it. I think there's a better way, a less expensive way, and one that will not discourage people from being involved in our, our boards, commissions, or the council. That's my call, so go ahead.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Williams. Any other comments? Councilmember Pastor?
My question is, we have this commission, but who administers all these complaints? And what would the cost be for all of these complaints? And are we hiring? Who's going to administer and determine all of this?
Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Pastor, currently, under Phoenix City Code two-dash-five-three, there is, that is a provision that provides for the processing of ethics violations against boards and commissions. So we already actually have a process for, that specifically addresses boards and commissions. And the way that that city code provision lays out, it's a process that is, the complaint is filed with the city clerk and then it is relayed to the city manager. And so that broadly lays out the process with regard to boards and commissions. However, it does not address council members.
Mr. Chair, Councilman Pastor, I think, you know, we clearly will need somebody to administer. I think, you know, we clearly will need somebody to administer this. As Councilwoman Williams notes, the frequency is indeterminate. And so it likely would, rather than have a staff member, we would want to contract with somebody, whether it's a law firm or others. But until we would have experience with this, who would administer this process, including the convening of the commission investigations, et cetera? As to the cost, that would be borne by the city. And it will, it remains to be seen what it would cost. But, Dan, in general terms, and this is an unfair question on your feet, but we have qualified vendor lists for attorneys and firms that you have procured. Is there a reasonable range of fees that are associated with firms that are on that list?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Pastore. Well, there are a number of different services, so let me give you a range. We have retired judges, justices of the Supreme Court that have served as hearing officers in various protests and administrative proceedings throughout the city. Generally, roughly, in a hearing and a proceeding like that, their fees have ranged from approximately $3,000 to $6,000 for a particular proceeding. And that can be rather involved. Generally, for other types of legal services, to give you an idea, hearing officers, those prices are generally in the range of $100 to $200 per hour. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Under this mechanism, could everyone on the Ethics Commission be of one political party, especially if superior court judges or someone were primarily of one political party? Or do we have any balancing mechanism?
We have not proposed any, but we certainly will take any direction that you have. Again, our goal is to create the largest contours possible for what it is we should put together in an ordinance. And then we would expect there will be additional discussion about the ordinance and those precise details. But we would, Dan and I, would certainly be pleased to have as much direction as we could have now. And so if that's an area that you would like to give us feedback on now, we would take that.
Remind me, on the Judicial Selection Advisory Board, there is some partisan balance, or we just are nonpartisan?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Gallego. There is no, I don't believe that there's any partisan. If I have to go back and look, I can look real quick.
I don't think so.
I don't think, generally not. As, to note, though, for example, in the legislative, in the House and the Senate, in the legislature, it actually specifically, there's five members on each of their committee. And they said, but it specifically says no more than three can be of any one political party. But that's a partisan body, whereas, you know, the city of Phoenix is actually nonpartisan.
I have a question. So who appoints the judges to this committee, our commission?
Mr. Chair, actually, it would be the council itself, as originally proposed by the task force.
And then the other question would be, how are we operating now? So is there a commission? Or is there, if there is a complaint on ethics, what's the process now that we're using?
Mr. Chair, so again, for boards and commissions, there is a city code provision where effectively it's to the city manager. There is no current process in place for council members. With regard to employees, those ethical violations are addressed through the city manager's office. So that's essentially how it works now.
So basically, if there was a violation or accusation on one of my colleagues or myself, right now, we would probably look for an outside person, like the county attorney or someone like that, to handle that portion of it, right?
Mr. Chair, my advice to the city manager would be to recommend to him that we would hire a special prosecutor, someone from outside, to avoid the appearance of any sort of conflict or undue influence that would investigate and review the allegation.
Any other questions? Councilmember Pastore?
The five members? Who, what would be the makeup of those five members? Is it judges, lawyers, or we determine the five-member makeup?
As was originally, Mr. Chair, Councilman Pastore. Originally, it was conceived, coming out of the task force, it was judges. It is the pleasure of the city council. And really, why we're here today is if there is any adjustment you wish to make to that, we're open to that, clearly.
So there could possibly, could be three committee members, lawyer, and retired judge could be part of the group?
Yes, you could have, you could have citizens, just laypeople, lawyers. You know, I think Dan has referenced that, how the legislature does it with its own elected officials participating. I think the, it's what happens with the adjudicating of a complaint is really up to the city council to put together. This was what the Ethics Task Force suggested to you.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Pastore, if I may. I think the intent behind the task force, that the reason that they recommended judges was to address the issue of if they had spurious or frivolous complaints, that the likelihood of addressing those that had merit and moving them forward, whereas they would be in a better position to essentially address and dismiss any frivolous complaints. And so that was, as attending, and I didn't really participate, but in listening to the task force members, I think that was their rationale for recommending to the council that they include judges on the commission.
And I believe since the judges do come from a partisan environment, that some split would lead to better outcomes, a diversity of parties.
Any other questions or concerns? Is there a motion or maybe a direction we should take, or?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilmember Williams?
Knowing how I feel about this, I would make the motion to not accept the task force recommendation on the Ethics Commission, that we continue to go as-is.
We have a motion on the floor to continue as-is. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
What did you say? I didn't hear you.
Is there a second on that motion? I'll go ahead and second that. And any discussions on that? With that, we'll take.
I have a discussion. So in the motion, it is not, not taking the recommendation of this Ethics Committee, would there be a, possibly us coming up with another process?
It would be in the future. It would leave the process, as he described it, right now, where it would appoint, based on your recommendation to the city manager, a hearing person to investigate at the time. That would stay in place if you want to bring something up in the future. I think that could be a separate motion.
Okay.
And then when it comes to elected officials, it would be finding an outside, independent individual to come in and hear that case, right?
Mr. Chair, that would be my advice to the city manager, yes.
Did the task force talk about special prosecutor-type arrangements?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Gallego. Yes, the task force, as I recall correctly, they discussed a number of different options. But at the end of the day, I think they relied upon other, the review of other legislative bodies. For example, the city of Mesa, it's actually their own council that serves effectively as the Ethics Commission. They looked at the state's legislature. They looked at other counties, and of course, at Congress. And so having looked at that, generally, most of other legislative bodies address this matter through a subcommittee of its own members or appoint a commission, an independent commission, to review it. So I think that was what influenced their recommendation.
Mesa, the full council addresses this type of situation?
Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Gallego, yes, that's correct.
The reason that I second this is that I've been on the council for the last seven years, and I don't really see that there's a problem that we have with the process in place. And I think that this can become a political football if we actually have a commission. And I can only see this becoming a way to to damage reputations of different individuals on the council. So I think that if there was a problem, I think we needed to address it. But I don't see a problem right now or in the past seven years that I've sat on the council. And that's the reason why I approved, I second the motion that Councilmember Williams put on the table. Because I really believe that it's not, there's not a big issue on the table right now within the city of Phoenix. I believe that we needed to update our ethics handbook and some of the policies. It's been a while since we actually looked at them and actually updated them. I think our staff did a wonderful job in updating our handbook and the policy. But I think this portion of the policy, I think we're okay with. I'm personally okay with.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make the comment, if I may. I don't want you to interpret this that I'm against the ethics or the ethics handbook. In 1989, when that incident had happened, is what prompted me to run for office. And the first thing I did in office, when Mayor Goddard was here, was to get Professor Paul Bender over here, created a committee, and we wrote the first ethics handbook. It's a very complex issue. It took us almost eight months to get something in writing. Since that time, I know it's been amended several times to strengthen it. I think it has been very effective. I think that people understand how important this is to the city of Phoenix. It's why we haven't had any problem. And I think we hold people to high standards, and we need to recognize that. And so I don't think we need to take the draconian measures at this time.
Is there any other comments from my colleagues?
Can I make a friendly amendment to the motion?
I don't know. Let's hear it.
Is it possible to, if, since nobody's acting right now, I've heard Mesa, the elected officials act as the commission? Can we, I guess my friendly amendment would be looking at maybe us acting as a commission when we have some ethics violations?
On our employees?
No, this would be on council and boards and commissions. This is all this refers to, if I'm correct. And, you know, maybe it needs to come back to the subcommittee for further review, because I think there are other options. It could be filed, we could have the initial, it could come through the Public Safety Subcommittee, who could then make a recommendation to full council. I think there's other ways to handle it, rather than what's in this packet. So if you want to amend it to say, if a committee could come back for further review and, or, how to say, revision?
Well, since we are meeting, I mean, next week, that gives us time to.
Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, if you wanted to give Dan and I direction for reviewing other options, we certainly could identify options based on some of the comments we've heard and present those to you at the next meeting.
Okay, I will accept that as a friendly amendment. Is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. I would.
Review other options.
Have us bring us different options than what's been presented today.
All righty, any other discussion on that?
And does the second agree?
I agree 100%. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes, so I believe that the rest of the conversation on the commissions is out, or we can actually put that to aside. And I think we need to talk about the city council's response. Or would that be?
Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, I think based on what I heard you say, those two elements sound like they might have some influence on each other. The last area that would be the discussion of penalties. And so let me flip to that.
I have to say, I thought the motion included this portion, because I think.
No, if that's, that's fine.
I think it includes all of it.
Very good. We will come back.
All righty, then. Any other comments or guidance for our staff in bringing?
All your work. It's been difficult.
But once again, thank you for all your efforts. And I know it's hard to update a handbook that hasn't been updated for years. And thank you for all your hard work, and we'll see you next week. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.